Okay, we are now on the air so I can call the meeting in order. This is the March 20th regular meeting of the Durango City Council. The time is 7:34. We begin with a roll call.
Councilor Bettine?
Here.
Councilor Broke?
Here.
Councilor Yousaf?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Marbury?
Here.
And Mayor White?
Here.
The first item on, first two items on the agenda are proclamations. One for Athletic Training Month and one for Citizen Recognition for the Extraordinary Women of Durango. I'll come to the podium for that. First proclamation is for Athletic Training Month. Whereas, athletic trainers have a long history of providing high-quality health care for athletes and those engaged in physical activity based on specific tasks, knowledge, and skills acquired through their nationally-regulated educational processes. And whereas athletic trainers are skilled practitioners in the prevention, recognition, evaluation, and aggressive treatment of athletic injuries. And whereas athletic trainers provide rehabilitative services, education, and health care guidance for those under their care. And whereas the National Athletic Trainers Association represents and supports over 40,000 members of the athletic training profession, including several hundred athletic trainers in Colorado. And whereas athletic trainers are allied health care professionals who are responsible for the development and coordination of effective health care delivery systems in professional, collegiate, and high-school athletics, as well as in clinics, hospitals, corporate, and industrial settings, and all branches of the U.S. military. And whereas leading organizations concerned with athletic training and health care have united in common commitment to raise public awareness of the importance of the profession of athletic training and the role of athletic trainers in the provision of quality health care services. Now therefore, I Dick White, Mayor of Durango, Colorado, do hereby proclaim March 2017 as Athletic Training Month in the city of Durango, and encourage all citizens to appreciate the valuable services that athletic trainers provide to physically-active populations. And to accept the proclamation, we should have Jeb Davis, who's the Athletic Training Education Program Coordinator at Fort Lewis College. Congratulations Jeb.
If you don't mind, I brought my microphone here.
And you may have, by all means, say a few words.
No, I'd just like to say thanks. This is the sixth year in a row that we've done this. We really appreciate your support.
Got it?
Let's give her a big round of applause.
And the second is a statement of recognition of the extraordinary women in Durango. I had the privilege last Thursday of attending the Women's Resource Center banquet where these women were honored, and the statements of the individual women about them and by them, as well as the keynote speaker, who was Mary Monroe Brown, at Two Trails 2000, made it a very impressive evening. So here we have the extraordinary women of Durango. March 20th, 2018. Whereas the Women's Resource Center in Durango, Colorado advocates for the personal empowerment and economic self-sufficiency of women and girls in La Plata County. And whereas March is Women's History Month. And whereas every year during Women's History Month, the Women's Resource Center honors extraordinary women in our community. And whereas the honorees for 2018 have crushed through glass ceilings, advocated for women and girls, and destroyed stereotypes of women in business. Now therefore, I Dick White, Mayor of Durango, Colorado, do hereby proclaim Eugenia Miller, M.D., Leslie Locke, and Valerie Schwiderski as the extraordinary women of Durango, this date on March 20th, 2018. And I believe Lisa Barrett is coming up to accept the award. Or accept.
I'm Lisa Barrett, and I'm a new member on the board of the Women's Resource Center. Quite an honor. This organization has been in existence since 1987 in Durango, and has served every year over 1,600 individual women and families. The Women's Resource Center educates and empowers extraordinary women in our community every day, irregardless of their circumstance, their history, or their social-economic status. We like to meet them, like we say, where they are in life. We have eight programs at the Women's Resource Center that offer social, professional, and personal growth opportunities. And if you'd like to learn more about how you can be involved with the Women's Resource Center, or find out more about these programs, you can visit our website at W R C Durango dot org. And thank you so much for this recognition.
Yes. Well, it's my pleasure to introduce extraordinary women of Durango. And I'm talking about the Fort Lewis College softball team. It's been my pleasure for many years to work with the softball team through my organization of the Kiwanis. The softball team from Fort Lewis comes the day before to help set up, and also to clean up. And this has been going on for years and years and years. And so I have invited the softball team, their coach Ellie Fracker. Podium, and my extraordinary women come right in front of the dais. We're gonna be lining up here on television, and... Well, I know you...
Here we are again.
Right.
And we did nothing wrong.
So Ellie, if you'll come to the podium and introduce the girls and your coaches?
Absolutely.
That would be wonderful for our viewing audience.
Yeah, well, first and foremost, the softball team would like to thank the city council members for having us and for having such an awesome relationship with Sweetie. We value that so much, and getting to participate every year, they've all become family to us, and we look forward to that every single year. So that's a huge thing that we look forward to, right when we come back to school. So going around the room, and first, this is our assistant coach, Steph Ron. And then I'll start over with Kelsey, who's from Colorado. We have Kenna Kylie from Vegas. You'll understand why soon. Julia is famous, Julia Roberts, she's from Arizona. Cassidy is from California. Caitlin's coming from Colorado. Allison from California. Lauren is from Colorado. Pilar is from Arizona. Angelique is from Arizona. Kenna is also from Vegas. Robin is from Colorado. Mandy from Arizona. Danae from Arizona. Madeline, who's from Colorado. Taylor's from Vegas. Kendra is from New Mexico. Tristan is from Arizona. Cassie from Colorado. Kelly is from Arizona. And last but not least, Katie from Colorado as well. So we have an awesome group. Emily is also on our team, but she's in class right now, as she should be. So we're super proud of everything that they do, not only on the field, but more so off the field. They do great in the classroom. We had a team GPA of over 3.4 last semester. I expect higher than that this semester. We're super proud of them and everything that they do, not only for Fort Lewis College, but for the community of Durango as well.
Well, I just want to say that I am so proud of these girls. They are so self-directed, self-disciplined. I worked with them for hours and hours with the Kiwanis Club in Durango in September for the Pancake Day. You tell them one thing, the seniors teach the freshmen, the freshmen the next year teach the next freshman, and they are amazing women. And we are so fortunate to have this great relationship with FLC and the city of Durango. So go Skyhawks! Yes, I would like to get a picture, absolutely.
And this time, we can actually stand on the dais and be taller than the athlete team. The basketball team was here too recently.
Thank you. You'll be on my Facebook page.
Oh yeah, you will.
One more for good manager.
Oh, thank you, Pat. Thank you, guys.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Marty. All right, great relationship.
Yeah, nice. Okay.
Thank you, Pat.
I'll keep you posted if I hear anything. I'll keep you posted if I hear anything.
Okay, excellent.
It'll be fun. We'll have to coordinate.
And I'd just like to remind our audience that city council beams out to Cortez and Delores, as well as the Bayfield area, and out in the Anamis Valley. So you may be inspiring a young girl who might watch this. Because when I was in high school, there was no way, there was no softball team. And so I played softball, but there was nothing for me at a higher level. So congratulations. Thank you, girls.
Moving on, the next item is the consent agenda, or the reading of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is reserved for items that are routine, are non-controversial, and the council will vote on them by a single motion unless a citizen or member of the council wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda. So may we have the reading of the consent agenda?
Item 4.1 and 4.2 are approval of minutes. 4.1, the regular meeting of February 20th, 2018. 4.2, the study session of February 27th, 2018. Items 4.3 through 4.12 are discussion and possible action items. 4.3 concerns approval of an updated and revised version of the rules and procedures for boards and commissions manual. 4.4 concerns Resolution R. 2018-5 repealing Resolution R. 2002-23 and re-establishing the Library Advisory Board. Item 4.5 concerns Resolution R. 2018-6 repealing Resolution R. 2010-22 and re-establishing the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission. Item 4.6 concerns Resolution R. 2018-7 modifying the name, duties, and responsibilities, members, term limits, and quorum of the multimodal advisory board to follow the city of Durango's updated boards and commissions rules and procedure manual, and reflect the board's expanded oversight. Item 4.7 concerns Resolution R. 2018-8 repealing Resolution R. 2009-6 and re-establishing the Natural Preservation Advisory Board. 4.8 concerns Resolution R. 2018-9 repealing Resolution R. 2013-29 and re-establishing the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Item 4.9 concerns 2018 appointments to boards and commissions. 4.10 concerns Resolution R. 2018-10 authorizing an additional appropriation to the capital projects fund for Lake Nighthorse. Item 4.11 concerns the Mountain Trace Town Homes Phase III Building P Final As Built Plan. 4.12 concerns a letter of support for Energy Mineral Impact Assistant Fund Grant, U.S. Highway 550, 160, Grandview Interchange Project in County Elements. 4.13 through 4.15 are requests for public hearings with a proposed date of April 3rd, 2018. 4.3 is to consider granting an easement to La Plata Electric Association, Inc., to install new service to Rocky Mountain Chocolate Factory. 4.14 is to consider granting an easement to La Plata Electric Association, Inc., to install new service to the River Gate Development. 4.15 is to consider the Lumina Apartments II Preliminary and Final Development Plan. And item 4.16 is final approval of ordinance O. 2018-4 approving the annexation and initial zoning of the Lake Nighthorse addition to the city of Durango, and declaring an effective date.
Is there any member of the public who'd like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Any member of council?
I would like to remove 4.9 regarding appointments of members to the boards and commissions.
And I'd like to remove item 414. Any others?
Four.
Which one?
414.
I thought I would remove 4.12, please.
Okay, and that is the energy impact?
Yes.
Great, support, okay. May we have motion?
Let me see if I can keep up with all of you. I move to approve the consent agenda without, what's your number, Melissa?
4.12.
4.12.
4.9.
4.9.
4.14.
And 4.14.
One second. Then we have a roll call.
Councilor Bettine?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Marbury?
Yes.
Councilor Broke?
Yes.
Councilor Yousaf?
Yes.
And Mayor White?
Yes. Let's take these in order, in numerical order. So start with 4.9.
We just had a recent meeting where we have an additional member that we will be appointing and possibly an alternative. So I think it's appropriate to perhaps continue this, or for possible revision.
And there, acknowledge that there was a clerical error, and we wish to defer that till the next meeting, so we can get that straightened out.
Is a continuance appropriate, if that's the case?
Sure.
There's no other... Well, I don't know if that requires a motion to continue.
I think it does.
If it does, I make a motion to continue. Item 4.9 on next regularly scheduled meeting.
I'll second.
Over a roll call?
Mayor Pro Tim Marbury?
Yes.
Councilor Broke?
Yes.
Councilor Bettine?
Yes.
Councilor Yousaf?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Councilor Yousaf?
Yes, I just thought that we should have just a little quick update on this, since we are asking for a letter of support to support the Energy Mineral Impact Grant for a very important interchange that's going to take place.
I'd be happy to explain that...
Just a little update.
To the council and for the public. What we are talking about here is known as Farmington Hill, and it's actually the intersection of U.S. Highway 550 and 160 in the Grandview area. We know it on the council as the Bridge to the Future. And this will connect the upper part of Farmington Hill with that interchange. The city is a partner with the Department of Local Affairs, the Colorado Department of Transportation, Region 5, the Southern Ute Indian Tribe, La Plata County, and the city. And we all have contributed to this project. And I would recognize the efforts of Mike McVah, who's the district manager for CDOT. He put together approximately $99.6 million in funding from a variety of federal and state sources to make this happen. So that's pretty close to miracle work. The item that the council is about to consider is our share of a match for a grant through the Department of Local Affairs. Together with the Southern Ute Indian Tribe, who are putting in $500,000, La Plata County putting in $250,000, and the city $250,000, we would be able to apply for a grant from DOLA for $1 million. So combined, the local match plus the DOLA grant is $2 million. And those funds would be used for parts of this project that are not covered by the funding that Mike McVah was able to secure. And these, this would include two intersections on top of Farmington Hill that will make the county road intersections to 550 safer, and they'll be at a T-intersection. And it'll also cover the costs of taking out the existing road and reclaiming that for some purpose yet to be determined. So the action here is for the council to authorize the mayor to sign the letter that's attached. This grant cycle deadline is April the 1st. So if we get the mayor's signature tomorrow, it goes over to the county. They've received a similar letter from the Southern Ute Indian Tribe, and then Ms. Spina can put the packet together and get it off to the state.
Great.
Excellent, thank you.
I would remark that I happen to be driving back on 160. You may have noticed a couple of strangers in the audience with my wife earlier. These are my best friend from the fourth grade and his wife. And we were driving back from the airport, and here's a helicopter hovering over, somewhere over that right-of-way, with something very big under it. I know there was a lot of geotechnical work that has to be done on some very rugged terrain to start moving this project forward. So I'd say, it's gotta be part of this project.
They've been doing test borings, and there are parts of the terrain, as you indicated, that they can't access. So they had to hire a helicopter to take the drill to those areas. There are two bridges involved in this relocation of the road. And to put those in perspective, if you're all familiar with the High Bridge, which is over by Vantiv, one of those two bridges is higher in terms of its height over the gully than the High Bridge is over the river. So these are substantial structures.
Long time coming.
Yep.
And aren't we lucky that La Plata County is going to be receiving $99 million, and that's going to be throughout the county. There'll be people staying here, shopping here, going to grocery store. It's just amazing that this is finally happening in our lifetime. So congratulations, La Plata County, city of Durango, Southern Ute Tribe, and Pat Vaughn for making all of this happen.
Mike McVah, Pat Vaughn too.
Yes, Pat Vaughn and...
Because he definitely had a role with the growth fund in terms of securing the half-million dollar commitment from the tribe.
Absolutely. Well, with that, Melissa, do you want to do that?
Just this one?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, okay. So are we just doing one at a time then?
Yes.
Okay, so I make a motion, please, to authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support for the Energy Mineral Impact Assistance Grant Fund, U.S. 550/160 Grandview Interchange Project, County Elements.
I'll second.
So we have a roll call?
Mayor Pro Tim Marbury?
Yes.
Councilor Yousaf?
Yes.
Councilor Bettine?
Yes.
Councilor Broke?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. I pulled item 4.4 because, you know, the granting of easement, I think, is pretty straightforward. But it was slightly unclear in the agenda doc whether this would be a buried line or an overhead power line, and I was wondering about that. You know, thinking that, particularly with potential further development of Comdi Park, whether that might be buried rather than aerial.
My understanding is that it's underground. Yeah, it's all underground. There may be an impertinence or two that, actually, some of the negotiations are not complete yet. So, but in order to keep things moving, we put this on for a hearing. But part of the negotiations may involve having La Plata Electric install some improvements which might, we hope, make power to the park and for the trail, Kathy sitting in the back nodding her head, easier and less costly down the road. So the bulk of it will be buried underground, and in fact, all of the new lines, except in the rare cases that La Plata Electric's installing these days, are all underground. This one will be underground, yes. Because you're right, it will impact the north end of that park.
And thanks for the clarification. I realize after the fact that, oh, this is only the request for sure.
This is the request, right, right.
We're gonna actually scout the nitty-gritty next time.
The nitty and the gritty will be coming.
But still, it seemed worth asking the question because, you know, it's, I think in terms of long-term, we'd rather have that as an underground utility.
Yes, and Kathy's staff has been heavily involved in the review of this process, as has Levi's staff, to make sure that we're not interfering with future plans of the park.
Looking for a motion?
I'll accept a motion.
Mayor, I will move to set a public hearing to consider the granting of an easement to La Plata Electric Association to install new service to the River Gate Development at the April 3rd, 2018 regularly scheduled city council meeting.
I'll second. May we have a roll call?
Councilor Bettine?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Marbury?
Yes.
Councilor Broke?
Yes.
Councilor Yousaf?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Moving on, the next item is public participation. This is an opportunity for individuals to address the council on subjects that are not already scheduled for public hearings at this meeting. We ask individuals to limit their remarks to five minutes.
Mayor White, my name's John Simpson. I live at 1831 Crestview Drive. The purpose of my visit today is to continue the discussion of the budgeting and financial reporting of the city. The January monthly financial statement has a new accounting method for capital projects. This year, the budget has not been modified to include an unknown list of capital projects without your approval, as was the normal practice in years past. This is a very big step in the right direction. Thank you for correcting this major issue. However, please consider this positive step may result in actual expenditures exceeding the budget. Although rural cities like Durango are not, excuse me, are exempt from most of the state budget law, the law should be used as a resource for defining acceptable budget practices. The budget law that says spending more than is budgeted is a violation of the statute. It also states that all unspent appropriations expire at the end of each year. Spending money on things like College Drive, in addition to projects actually approved in the 2018 budget, may result in expenditures exceeding what you approved in the budget. At your February 27th study session, you discussed funding for the College Drive and 8th Avenue construction project. We were told it was in the budget. The budget, the project, is not in the 2018 budget, and it was not in the 2018 budget. There is only a small amount of money in the 2017 budget for the design of the road. Since there's not been a supplemental appropriation since January, I were using the Thomas Avenue money to pay for the construction. Now that we have eliminated the indefinite carryover of projects, please consider doing what other communities do, and require formal council action before starting any project that was not in the 2018 budget. This agenda item would explain where the money will come from. Adding new things to the budget requires either identification of unplanned revenues or the willingness to spend down the fund balance. I'm not against the College Avenue project. It is just a surprise to me that you're working on a project budgeted several years ago. In our email discussions in November, which staff was copied on, I was assured the road projects are typically completed the year they are appropriated, and therefore there's minimal carryover of capital projects outside of water and sewer. I feel staff has overstepped by deciding this project has a higher priority than any of the other pressing needs of the city. It's your responsibility, not staff's, to decide which major projects are pressing. The fact that a project was approved by a prior city council should not be used as a reason to avoid seeking formal approval from this council before construction begins. This is especially true now that our budgeting and financial reporting method has been corrected. Mayor White?
Mayor White, I'm going to ask Ms. Blake to come up here. And in my seven years on city council, projects are approved and carried forward, and we are informed of them. So Ms. Blake, would you like to respond to Mr. Simpson's comments?
Most definitely. Excuse me. So we, the city council appropriated $200,000 in the 2018 budget. So, we, the city council appropriated $200,000 in the 2017 budget for design and engineering of the College and Eighth Avenue Road. That project is currently out for, we contracted for design. We do not have money appropriated or allocated for construction. We're looking for that in 2021. It will be in the strategic plan forthcoming from the Multimodal Board, Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and the Natural Lands Advisory Board and their strategic plan. However, there is a project that ties into the East and College Road Diet, and that is the Second Avenue Signal. That was appropriated for this year, and that project is currently under construction. That project ends at between third, second and third avenues. So, that project, I think, may be what you're talking about, and that money was appropriated, and so it's a piece of a project that ties into the larger Road Diet project. So, does that answer all the questions?
It did for me.
City manager?
Yeah, a couple of points. The capital budgeting is different from operating budgets, and capital budgets carry over from year to year. And one of the definitions of a capital project is it takes more than a year to complete. And I would point out to the council and to the public, we're not violating any laws. In fact, we have won the Government Finance Officers of America Award for Excellence in Budgeting for, I think, nine straight years. And also, we've won the Government Finance Officers Award for Certificate of Achievement in Financial Reporting for 30 years. I might have that date wrong. And those two awards are the result of peer reviews and standards that exceed the statutory, we're not a statutory city, but we hold ourselves to a much higher standard. That's why we have a charter.
Thank you for that information, and I think it's clear that I've been on seven years, Mayor White's been on seven years. We have seen projects been approved and not always completed in the year that they are approved. That's the way cities operate. And I know, for example, the wastewater treatment plant will be finished in 2019, and that's the expectation. So, no, you don't always start a project and finish a project in one year.
Sir, any other member of the public who wishes to address the council tonight?
My name is Ron Edwards, Department 102. I'm just here, I'm sure you've heard this before, but cutting the routes of the buses that's across to you, 160, at Mercy is going to be a tragedy thing because a lot of us handicap, heavily depend on that bus route. And this one next to see is about Durango. Get your bus. But, you know, I think it's very important to try to keep that alive.
Well, I'm going to ask Ms. Blake to come back up here because we haven't, the Southern Ute Tribe has Sue Cap, and they're going to be picking up people in Three Springs and bringing them into town, the Mercy Route. Ms. Blake, would you like to?
Sure. Hi, how are you?
Yeah.
Good. So, the cuts will take place on May 7. Will be enacted, and unfortunately, we haven't been able to find any way to mitigate the impacts on Crestview and 160 West. Council Marbury, Mayor Protem is correct, but we have been able to work an agreement with Road Runner Transit so that we can have six runs a day for Mercy to town. And I completely understand if you can't get from point A to point B, what kind of quality limits you have. We are, one of the things that we have been able to do is maintain the Opportunity Bus, which is not perfect.
You know how proud that's going to be?
And I do know how proud of that's going to be.
It takes two weeks ahead of time.
It's going to be two weeks ahead of time, but hopefully, you and many other members of the public have come forward to tell us how important public transit is. We are doing a community engagement process right now, working on moving into the future what does our community value. And if public transportation is one of those things, and it's one of those things that people are willing to pay for, then hopefully, we can buy additional funding...
I understand, but...
...to reinstate.
But grants are there.
But we're stuck because we don't have the money to operate, and we're facing cuts.
Let's take the snowplow money that we have, and it's still this year, footed in public days and potholes.
I wish we could, but it's two different types of funds. So, I'm going to go get a business card, and I'm going to write a date of a meeting on the back of that card, and I really hope that you can come to our next community forum because this is part of the conversation we want to have.
Right. I understand there's a lot of other buses coming in right now, you know? I don't know what their fee is or anything, but we need that bus.
Ms. Blake, what about Southwest Center for Independence?
So, there is Southwest Center for Independence, that's Southwest Ride, and that's what you're referring to.
Right.
So, there's a Transit Coordinating Council, and we're working on developing some information so that all of the options are in one place, and we can get that information with the price and eligibility requirements.
Right.
So, it's not perfect, and it's not what you want to hear, and I'm really sorry.
All right. Yeah, I just had to get mine. Bless you.
Thank you. I'm going to grab that card.
Okay.
And we appreciate you coming, and we are very much aware of the situation. Ms. Blake has been informing city council about this cliff that's going to happen, and, believe me, no one up here wants to make any of those cuts.
It's extended to May 7.
Yes.
Basically. And with this, that's just going to be, these are the people that live in Durango. I've been here since 1979. I didn't get hurt until 2010, but it's just like, what a great deal. I understand Opportunity Bus, but as hard as it is to get on that, it's going to be even harder. Everybody's going to want to ride. And the problem with Southwest Independence, they want you to sign a waiver that says if they get in an accident, we're not covered. So, I think that's a little bit ridiculous. So, it turns a lot of people up. It's like, what do you mean, crashing? Are we taking care of it at the hospital or anything? So, I know you guys know. You all know.
And we do hear you.
I think, thank you for being here, and, you know, it's part of the fallout of probably one of the most difficult decisions I've made since we've been on council. Durango's been really fortunate to have had upwards of $800,000 worth of funding through the state to fund what we've been able to create here that other communities, Cortez, Pagosa, anybody within your shot of here, has not been able to develop. And as a result, we've created a transit-dependent population, yourself included, which is a really wonderful thing. And so, as CDOT, in their infinite wisdom, decided to spread the wealth, if you will, to other communities that haven't been able to create these transit systems and therefore cut our $800,000, you know, it needs to become part of a larger picture, and hopefully, that's our community dialogue. We'll continue to embrace the need, as you're expressing, and cause us to look at, or cause the public to look at, other funding opportunities. And that's, I think, what Suede's referring to. We need to absolutely make this a priority because it is, just as you said, the really cool thing about Durango. And it's not only, it's a transit-dependent community, but it's also the future of Durango in terms of...
Can't cut off the college because of newspaper that, you know? I don't know. As Road Runner goes five times a day, you'd be asking me to sit in my chair at Mercy for three or four hours. It's very hard to schedule appointments just going out those five times a day, when it used to be half an hour, you know, a day. I understand, you know, yeah, but I thought that part of the meter money went towards public transit, $800,000, you know, because I know the past year has been $1,005, just off the meters, you know?
That money continues to go to transit. It's the, it was, you know, I believe in 2017, we had a $900,000 federal grant, and my understanding is that there was a change in language in the last federal transportation bill that allocated that money to the states, that the CDOT interpreted as saying they needed to spread that money around more, and since we've been extraordinarily successful, unfortunately, we're taking a big hit, and we are seeking a way to restore that. We, you know, we want to expand the system, not contract it.
It's a body to people that move here, you know? I mean...
Here's another idea.
They don't want to drive in the snow.
Right, you can always talk to your, and call your congressman, Cory Gardner, Michael Bennett, Scott Tipton, and share your ideas about funding infrastructure, especially in rural communities.
Yeah. I mean, I live in town, so it really doesn't affect me as much as the snowing, so I can take my wheelchair downtown for 14, but it's a lot of the other people that really depend on that route that are not able to get down to, take the trolley, you know, in certain spots, and I understand trolleys are going to knock it down to one instead of two.
The trolley will continue.
Right.
The trolley's not going to be impacted.
Right.
It's actually changing schedule.
The schedule actually will be more uniform.
Okay.
I think, I think I want to thank you, Mr. Edwards, for your input. It helps us to, you know, understand some of the specific impacts that this difficult decision is making on individuals in the community. At this time, I think I need to ask if there's any other member of the public who wishes to address the council tonight.
Thank you. Right on.
My name is Debbie Vickery. I live at 3217 East 7th Avenue. I've been here since 1974, and when I first moved here, buses weren't taxis, you know, you didn't have a taxi, but buses definitely were a pipe dream. And it's been really great to be able to have this service for so many people, so many of the, what I would call, common people of Durango, not the ones who come here with lots of money and stay here with lots of money, but the working people that are just trying to pay their rent, which is, you know, unlucky, I got into a house before Durango went nuts. But I can't imagine being, coming here and being able to afford living here. It's, you know, we're just probably not as far as the amount of money we have, but going that direction with the way it looks in Aspen and Vail and all the places that don't, that have a lot of people that have, are service providers, waitresses, you know, waiters that do the, all the work of the town, and they can't live here, they can't afford to live here. And now the transportation, I mean, it was, it was different when the hospital was in the center of town. Now, it isn't. You can't comfortably walk out of the hospital unless you're, you know, an athlete or something, and then you probably don't need to go to the hospital. But I just wanted, you know, to put in my two cents as far as the value of having, supporting a system that, that can help life be easier for the common people that have to work here, and there are so few places really where people can afford to live, you know, and then to have the bus taken away. I don't know if the increasing the cost of the bus is something that's already been really, you know, considered very much, or, but I would hope that it wouldn't be something that would be put on the back burner, you know, that it's more and more with the cost of everything, including fuel and cars and everything, in all, to make it be a big priority for Durango to continue to have.
You know, we did look at, we looked at raising the rates, but said, no, that wasn't a good idea for the travelers, because we tried to keep it affordable for retired people and working people.
Okay, but then if it's not even there, then the service isn't there.
Well, what we did was to raise the parking tickets, because that you can control. You know, if you're parking downtown and paying attention, you can control that, and if you do get a ticket, it does go into the transit department. So, we don't have all the answers, and it all revolves around money, and we have heard you. We absolutely have heard you. So, and there are different buckets of money. The general revenue is funded by sales tax, which is the city manager's going to talk about. And then we have what's called enterprise funds. They're like businesses, and they must pay their own way. The airport, for example, has to pay its own way with the money that they receive. So, it's not an easy answer.
Was there any kind of poll taken for the people who regularly need to use the bus?
Yes, because Ms. Blake did lots of surveys.
As far as them saying, no, please don't increase the...
Yes, I believe so.
Or getting rid of it, either, you know, increasing the cost or to each patron or just getting rid of the service completely.
I'm going to have Ms. Blake come back up here when you're finished, and she can tell you about all of it.
I'd like to interject, yeah, to the one salient number that we all dealt with, and we haven't been working on this for a couple of years now. We knew that this was predictably coming. If you say raise the rates, the reason we didn't raise the rates, one reason is because there's never enough. The ride, I think Ms. Blake will tell you, is that every trip that has been made to...
Mercy.
Mercy costs the taxpayers of the city of Durango $13.50 for every trip. So, for a dollar, what we now charge or have been charging till this route has been eliminated, not eliminated, reduced from its hourly route to six times per day. And so, $13.50 can't be made up with a 50 cent or a $1 increase in ridership, so that would tend to decrease the ridership to the point where that is even more expensive per rider. So, until there's a global picture and a source of funding that would accommodate a much more robust transit system, we're going to have to live with the cuts that we've created, I'm afraid. So, that's, that's kind of puts it in perspective, but to me, that's like a, that $13.50 ride that we all pay for, for each and every ride, when in fact, even though it takes two weeks to schedule, perhaps is what we've heard from, there is still service, door-to-door service for every member of our community to get a ride on the Opportunity Bus from their doorstep to Mercy Medical Center, as an example, that's available every day of the week, so, on a scheduled basis. So, that, without that, I think any, none of us would have really had the heart to make these cuts, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And Ms. Blake, would you come and talk about the public process that your department went through?
Yes. So, the, for the past three years, we've done ridership surveys, and I'm going back a little bit here because I think that the information that we've obtained during the onboard ridership surveys, we do them twice a year, it's a statistically valid methodology that's been vetted, shows that we have a greater than 70% transit-dependent population that rides the bus. So, we started gathering that information when we would come to council saying, you know, this doesn't pencil, we need to raise parking meter rates, we need to raise parking ticket rates. This is coming down towards us. This lack of funding is coming towards us, and we're going to have to either make cuts or find a dedicated funding source. And I know most of you have, it's like a broken record, because I've been before you for eight years saying that. And we're finally here. So, we knew who the population was. We know our ridership. We know it's low-income, transit-dependent riders predominantly, and then students. And then we have some choice riders, but we have a nationally recognized system. And so, we were hoping that that would help carry us through, but it didn't. And so, for the public process, once we heard, knew that CDOT was going to be doing their policy change and reallocating the distribution of funds, so the new frame... So, the new framework for this formula that they're using, we are the outlier. Durango Transit is the outlier. There are many agencies that are getting huge increases. And we took it all the way up to the governor. And there have been some additional tweaks made to their policy change that are for the good, but it, and it helped the state on the whole, but it didn't help us. So, once we knew that that $700,000 cut was coming down the line, we did a very intensive public process. We reached out to our riders, we did onboard ridership surveys, we met with our, the clients, so the providers, so all of the Health and Human Services providers, medical providers, Southwest Center for Independence, we offered neighborhood meetings, and we had a robust public process where we asked, what are your priorities? Why do you ride transit? We're facing cuts, what's most important to you, so we can maintain the pieces that are most important? We heard the opportunity bus, and because of that, the opportunity bus stayed. We could have shrunk the service area, but we didn't, because we know that that is a crucial component of our transportation system, and if we're facing cuts, we need to maintain that. What we ended up doing actually expanded the opportunity bus, because now we're able to provide opportunity bus service seven days a week, which is something that we had heard during our planning processes for multimodal transportation for the past eight years. When we were looking at cuts, we tried everything that we could to say, can we cut hours? Can we cut service? Can we go to hourly service? And can we cut this section out and provide a very broad-based service? And when it came down to it, the decision was made based off of that public comment as well as the data that showed the ridership information. So, what is your most successful or efficient route? Those routes were the trolley, and they have the highest ridership, so cost per trip is the lowest, the most ridership. The trolley, Fort Lewis College, and Walmart. By far, outperformed the other routes. And so, that's the information that we really started with in terms of where can we tweak this. Mercy is our fastest-growing segment. So, Mercy Three Springs area, fastest-growing segment, but lowest performing, because you, it costs so much to get out there, and there's not as many people. So, when we looked at that, we said, okay, we can mitigate with Roadrunner. It's not perfect, but it's something. We also looked at, and have been for the last probably eight to 10 years, how can we increase our revenues? Do we increase ticket prices? Do we incre, or, you know, fares? Do we increase monthly passes? Do we increase, you know, we increased parking in every way, shape, and form that we could. But you also have to look at that demographic. So, we said, you are going to pay the true fit cost of your fare, like Counselor Brooke was saying. You get on the trolley, you pay $3 to get from North Mitten, from 32nd Street to the Transit Center, then you pay another $13 to get from the Transit Center to Mercy, and you do the same thing on the way back. You know what my rider, our ridership's going to look like?
Yeah.
So, it'll be actually worse. So, you have to balance the increased cost, who your ridership is. If we had all choice riders, we could increase those fares much easier, even though we wouldn't make it pencil, than going with the $1 per trip. So, I hope that answered your question. If you have more questions, I'm happy to meet with you, or you can meet with our Assistant Director of Transportation, and we can explain the process that we went through and give you more details. Um, but it, I don't know what else to say.
I know where I've got to update the bus, you don't, I don't pay for that, but, uh, Medicare, Medicaid, whatever, pays for it, it's 18 something each way for that trip, which it helps. That's not what, you know, you guys charge $1 for the trolley. Uh, $0.50 for me, something like that. And I understand that economy is kind of looking up, but, um, I don't know what's really going on, and wherever the money comes from, it doesn't magically appear.
We have a lot of community members, and we have a lot of really good, creative brains out there. So, hopefully, we can come together as a community to say, here's what we need, this is what's important in our community, and here's how, creative solutions to make them happen. And we'll, you know, negotiate on the finer points and figure out how we can come to a middle ground so that we can, can have Durango as the great place that we love.
Amber, while you're there, will you talk about the date for the next public engagement?
Sure. I was going to do that, but go ahead.
So, April 16, um, Monday, it's at 5:00 PM here at City Hall. We'll be having our next community forum. For all of the public out there, if you have not taken our community satisfaction survey, please log on to the city's website, durangogub.org backslash engage. And the satisfaction survey is there, the upcoming dates of our public meetings, feedback and input that we've received so far from all of the meetings that we've had. And there's email addresses on there, and places that you can also provide additional feedback and comments to the city.
And that might be an opportunity for you, Mr. Edwards, to come down to City Hall and, and participate. So, that's why I asked Ms. Blake to give us the date and the time and the place.
And I, I would mention that at the first forum that we had a couple of weeks ago, uh, there were individuals raising precisely the same points that you have, uh, these were folks from Three Springs. Uh, so, I, I just urge you to just, uh, not just come to the meetings, but talk to those people you know who are in similar circumstances, and raise your voices, this is the time to do that.
Right, well, you know, I understand that they're talking in spare grounds, I'm freezing for things.
Um, you, I, I can barely hear you, and we do not engage in a dialogue from the dials, so, so I do thank you for your input. And, uh, is there anyone else who wishes to speak to council tonight? Okay, moving on, uh, the next item is council reports and actions.
Well, I'll start.
You're good.
Counselor Patine, I'm going to just jump right over you and ask the city manager to talk about sales tax and the lodgers' tax.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Protan Marbury. Uh, this is the February, uh, monthly tax report, and this would be for sales that have occurred in January. And the sales tax for this report is, uh, has increased 8.2% month-to-month over 2017, and that brings us year-to-date to 3% um, over last year. Uh, and I would point out, for those of you who watch this show, um, the January report was down. Uh, and I, I would continue my, um, um, explanation that when we have an erratic sales tax, it's hard for us to plan ahead, so we have to take the most conservative approach, and we have, uh, I have instructed the department directors, um, to, uh, be very, very conservative and cautious, uh, when managing their budgets, because when we're up and down every month, i- it's not a stable situation. Uh, if I could jump ahead to lodgers' tax for the month, it was up 8.5%, but remains down 6.5% for the year. Uh, and again, the, um, correlation between lodgers and sales used to be direct. We, if you go back, um, five years or more, uh, the more people that came to town, the more the sales tax went up, uh, and we're not seeing that correlation. Uh, I do have some information from the Economic Development Alliance that was prepared by Mr. Zalneritis, and, uh, he cites three, um, uh, factors, and, and we have used those in the past with the council, is the declining population at, uh, San Juan County, particularly Farmington, they've lost 10,000-plus people in three years, the enrollment at FLC, and internet sales. Uh, there are things you cannot buy in Durango, uh, and we would hope you would buy them, uh, anything you can find locally, you would purchase it locally, and we understand that if you can't find something locally, you would buy it somewhere else. Uh, but keep in mind, as Counselor Marbury is fond of saying, uh, that purchase you make pays for the roads, pays for the police, and helps keep the, uh, general fund, uh, financially solvent.
Thank you.
I would, uh, add two other factors that I've been, uh, when I talk about this, there are also two demographic factors, that seniors like me don't spend as much, and I'm told that millennials will be much, are more interested in services than in goods, and we don't tax services. So, uh, you know, we've got multiple things, uh, confluence of multiple influences, uh, impacting our sales tax. And the demographics are prevalent everywhere, although we do have a young population in Durango. Uh, but other communities in Colorado saw more robust growth than we did last year. So, I think there are some local issues, and certainly the college and Farmington, um, are significant issues for us that are not shared widely.
Um, I'm also going to talk about that I taught municipal government to Needham's third-grade classes, and then today, the Needham third grade came to City Hall, and they happened to walk past my house today, and I stopped to talk to them, and a little girl said, I sat in your chair, and I want to be the mayor of Durango. And I'll tell you what, that just gave me chills and thrills. So, um, it was really exciting to teach young people about government and how the city really works, and how we pay for things. So, um, I'm encouraging all you girls out there, you need to be the mayor of Durango, keep that in mind. I also spoke today at the, at an AARP meeting, giving them city updates, and also at the senior center, giving them, uh, senior updates. I'd like to also announce that I'm the library liaison, and if you have, uh, recognized someone who has been a real dedicated and, uh, committed person to the library, there's what's called the Library Champion Award, and the deadline for applications or nominations, it will be May 31st. It's online, go in there and type up your recommendation of who you think has made a co, a commitment and a dedication and a difference in our library. Also, one of the things that I really like is called spring cleanup. It appears on your bill, it's a dollar fifty for the spring, a dollar fifty for the fall. Uh, the city manager has told us that on April the 9th, it begins. It's online, so you can see which neighborhood starts first. They rotate it every year, so not the same neighborhood is picked up, but it goes on until May the 4th. So, um, you know, the weather's been really mild on many days, and so it's time to start making a difference in your yard, if you're a, a person who likes to clean, clean up yards and get your flower beds ready. And those are my announcements, Mayor.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I'd select a report on, uh, last week, I was, uh, honored to, uh, represent Durango as president of Colorado Association of Ski Towns, which, uh, uh, my, we, we spent the spring organizing and, and last week presiding over, uh, our spring meeting, which is legislative in nature. Uh, we, we invite, uh, several of our local legislators, both, uh, state senators and state representatives, to dinner that evening. But, uh, the meeting consisted, which was in the city and county of Denver meeting, uh, Mayor Hancock's office, uh, we started with Kevin Bommer, who's our CML, uh, representative, talking about the legislative update and what's happening in, on, uh, Capitol Hill in Denver. And, uh, the salient feature there, I think, we talked about transportation, he's, he's convinced that virtually nothing's going to happen this year in terms of transportation funding that would get us out of this problem we've just been talking about for the past few minutes. Between the proposals that have been made in the Democratic House, get squashed in the Republican Senate, and vice versa, he's, he doesn't think that there's going to be any, uh, uh, anything new, and any, any bills relative to transportation probably are dead on arrival. Uh, followed, following that good news, uh, the new CDOT executive director, uh, was, uh, could talk to us for about, uh, 45 minutes, and, uh, I thanked him officially for the $100 million, uh, in, in front of all the mayors of, uh, Delray, AL Aspen, Crested Butte, and so forth, uh, for the, uh, funding to the extent of, uh, uh, $100 million or thereabouts. Uh, our new interchange, which we just passed, uh, in our, we, we just passed that, uh, letter of endorsement for earlier this meeting. Uh, but, uh, he was, he's, he remains optimistic that, uh, we will, uh, be able to garner some additional federal funding. He doesn't like the typical, the, the current budget proposals by the federal, uh, government. Uh, he thinks that means nothing for Colorado in, in terms of, uh, any meaningful, uh, infrastructure improvements, but, uh, he does think that we've got a long-term process where, uh, those infrastructure improvements will and can be made, uh, in the state of Colorado. Uh, that was followed by our, our CAST as an organization, uh, transportation is our big issue for the next, uh, year or two, in terms of a focus, and we've hired a transportation study group to, uh, provide, uh, member communities, of which Durango is one, a survey about transportation needs, so that we can all get a clear picture about where we stand relative to our long-term transportation needs. In our case, we've had, uh, we've had and developed a transportation system in our community, other communities have nothing, virtually, and then there's Denver, on the other hand, that has millions of dollars spent annually on, on, and are at the leading edge of, uh, public transportation, so, uh, and everywhere in between. So, uh, this study is meant to outline opportunities for communities of all sizes and report back to, uh, to, uh, to our member communities, and so that's, uh, that'll be a study that'll be conducted over about a 12-month period by CAST. Next, we, we heard from the director of the Colorado Land Trust, which is a, a optimistic entity in direct, in this, in the state of Colorado, they own a $3.2 billion fund, uh, which, uh, I didn't even know about, but they, in addition to managing the state-owned lands, they, uh, this $3.0 billion, $3.2 billion fund pays for the best school programs. And if you recall, in, uh, that's paying for a school in Mankas right now, that paid for a part of a school in Dolores, it paid for $20 million, a $40 million new high school in, uh, Monzoma Cortez, in Cortez. So, uh, uh, but then talked about how they, uh, make their investments and how they make these substantial investments in, in schools throughout the state. Mayor Hancock, uh, wrapped up the session, that talked about housing opportunities and their, uh, the Denver's initiatives for affordable housing and homelessness, uh, issues, uh, and what they're doing, uh, in the city and county of Denver. Uh, then we broke for dinner, and I was able to have dinner with Senator Don Corum from Montrose, and it was also attended by Representative Barb McLaughlin, and so, uh, are from, from here, as we know, in, in Durango. So, it was all, it was a really impactful, uh, session, a day and a half, and, which is attended by all the mayors and all the city managers of, uh, ski towns and resort communities throughout Colorado. Uh, our next meeting's going to be at Vail, at the, in combination with the CML conference in Vail in June. Uh, we have a fall meeting scheduled for Mount Crested Butte, and then we have a winter, uh, meeting that'll be up in Jackson, Wyoming, who is also a member of the Colorado Association of Ski Towns, to just see how, uh, they're dealing with all the common issues, homelessness, uh, transportation, affordable housing, vacation rentals, all those issues are common to us all. And so, uh, that's, uh, just a method that Durango shares our information and, and gains information from all the other communities in similar situations. That's it.
Thank you. I just have one update. I attended the La Plata Economic Development Alliance Investor Meeting, and we had one interesting, uh, report, um, that I wanted to share with council. The staff is aware of this, but Frank Lockwood, the executive director of Durango Area Tourism Office, suggested that, um, he announced that he and his board were all in agreement, that they would like to work to support an increase in the lodgers' tax. They talked about increasing that possibly from 2% to 6%, recognizing that ultimately it is, it depends on the community consensus, and finally, the vote by city council to determine if there would be ballot language for April of 2019. But he suggested that he is reaching out to the Durango Area Hotel and, um, Lodgers Association, and while there's differences in opinion, there is agreement that this should likely take place. He is also working hard to reach out to as many stakeholders as he can, to gather input and to understand concerns, and to see if he can work and help to support and to find solutions. The impact just to the city, only for the city, of raising the lodgers' tax, if it were to take place from 2% to 6%, would be to increase the annual lodgers' tax receipts from $1 million annually to $3 million. And he did not, at this time or at this meeting, talk about how those funds would be allocated. Of course, there's work to do there. But it was interesting, and I just wanted to keep you guys updated about that.
Thank you.
I think, uh, that's, that's very interesting news. I, I think, uh, those of us who've been on the council for a while understand that...
I think those of us who've been on the council for a while understand that, particularly compared to the CAST members, and that there's actually been a survey of relative tax rates in the, among CAST members, our lodgers' taxes low, we know that.
Our lodgers' taxes low.
And the crucial issue, first of all, I'm delighted to hear that they're discussing that big an increase.
Right.
And then the crucial issue always is going to be how it's allocated, which is going to, you know, dictate a lot of it, lot about generating very broad support across the community, which is what we need if we're going to go to the ballot. But I'm delighted to hear that that dialogue is beginning.
Right.
And it definitely feeds back into, as you heard earlier tonight, the public engagement process that the city is involved in. That's clearly one of the mechanisms that's possible. It might be the easiest one to take to the voters, because it is, it is paid primarily, almost exclusively by tourists.
And interesting that there's support from the Durango Area Hotel and Lodgers Association.
Yes. So I think there's, you know, real potential for synergy there. I'm delighted to hear that. I've got a few events to mention, I'll try to be brief. Two weeks ago, the council had dinner with the Southern Ute Tribe Council, and these are almost, you know, there's been a big turnover on the council in the last year, and so it was a good opportunity for us to get acquainted with them and share the multiple areas of common interest that we have with the tribe, and, and we trust that that will keep going. Mentioned that this, last week on Wednesday, the council and two different groups of staff had workshops with Martin Carcassonne, who is the, who runs the CSU Center for Public Deliberation, and is the guru around wicked problems. And we have a lot of those, including the one we discussed with the county commissioners this morning, which is homelessness. The context for this, however, is our civic engagement program. And how, how you're going to raise money and what it's going to be used for is one of these value-laden issues that different people are going to evaluate differently. And so it's only through extensive public process and civic engagement that we can come to an understanding of what the priorities of the community are and how we can best meet them. And this is underlying, one of the groups of staff was the 30 staff members who are being trained, who are trained facilitators, who are engaging the community, both in large groups and small, on this ongoing project over the next several months. I cannot underestimate the importance of this for the future of the city. One of the presentations was to the mayor's Youth Advisory Commission and the Youth Engagement Program, yes, at our meeting yesterday. So they were briefed and had their input into the process. And the, they are also continuing to plan, do their planning for the youth expo, which this year is going to be scheduled for Wednesday, May 2nd. Multiple events upcoming, one of them, speaking of legislative issues, the League of Women Voters will have Senator Corum and Representative McLaughlin for their annual legislative lowdown on Saturday, this upcoming Saturday, the 24th, at 10:30 a.m. At 1:00 p.m., Durango High School students are having the March for Our Lives, which will go from, start at 1 o'clock at the high school and continue from there to Rotary Park. We are delighted to announce that following the councils, I actually, I believe we have official action on the second reading of the annexation ordinance later in the agenda tonight. But the plans are now that Lake Nighthorse will open officially on Sunday, April 1st. For, because of construction in the area, it will be open for the first six weeks only on weekends, and for the first six weeks, basically by straight, by state statute, it will only be for non-motorized transportation. There are some details that you can get from the city website. However, on Saturday, the 31st, there's an opening day for kids. Children younger than 16 will be welcome to go fishing at Lake Nighthorse. And finally, related to water, the Southwest Water Conservation District is having their annual water seminar on Friday, April the 6th, from all day, essentially 8 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. That's at the Doubletree, but there is an admission fee of $45. And I think I will leave it off at that.
I was just going to add, Mayor.
Sure.
To the Lake Nighthorse discussion, unless I missed it, that you said that, that it's the Quiet Lake opening.
Yes, it is the Quiet Lake, well, I said no motorized.
No.
And one of the things we learned in the course of our discussions of Lake Nighthorse over the last few months, I believe that motorized tran, lake, motorized boating on lakes is prohibited by statute, state statute, until May 15th. And so this is an opportunity for the Quiet Lake advocates to kind of get, get a feel for how it's going to go. And granted, the water's cold at this time of year, and the weather is still maybe chilly, but it's an opportunity, and we really are looking forward to having data on the usage of Lake Nighthorse and how that's going to develop over the summer. And there, there will be more updates as the summer goes on with that.
And I just want to remind the community that no one stepped up to open the lake as a recreation, not the state of Colorado nor anyone else. And so the city did step up with a recreation plan. We are a recreation vendor-manager, and otherwise, we would still be looking at gates and no admittance. So I, a lot of work has gone on with meetings and our staff and our lawyers and the city council, and so it's finally happening, and I hope everyone has an opportunity. I know I have lots of friends that are ready to buy those annual passes. So I'm not sure where we can buy them or when we can start buying them. So I will look for that information from maybe Ms. Metz.
I believe the, the announcement that went up on the city website said that passes can be bought at the rec center, and once the gate is open, you can get either day passes or annual passes at the entrance, entrance gate.
All right, thank you.
At the Lake Nighthorse. Moving on, we have one legislative and policy-related hearing tonight. This is a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending Chapter 10 of the city's code concerning regulations and penalties related to the use, placement, and security of trash containers and use of wildlife-resistant containers to minimize conflicts with the wildlife in the city and declaring an effective date. Staff report from Levi Lloyd, thank you.
So Mayor White, members of council, Levi Lloyd, Director of City Operations. This is a public hearing to address proposed amendments to Chapter 10 of the city code concerning penalties related to the use, security, and placement of residential and commercial wildlife trash containers to minimize human-wildlife conflicts. The study session held February 27, 2018, city council discussed permanent changes to the code and recommended that staff make the following amendments to the code. Creation of designated zones where wildlife-resistant trash containers are mandatory. Phase 1 will be residences south of 7th Avenue and will require wildlife trash containers no later than May 1, 2018. Fees for the, for the containers will be assessed at $4 a month. Phase 2 for mandatory wildlife trash-resistant containers will be comprised of the areas west of North Main from 17th to 23rd Street. Phase 2 will be implemented in the spring of 2019, and again with a $4 per month fee for purchase of the can. Creation of the system where trash containers are numbered and permanently assigned to a property, and continuation of the current penalty structure for residential and commercial users, but in lieu of a citation into municipal court, residential violators would automatically have a wildlife trash container delivered for a $100 fee and the additional $4 monthly charge for the, the container. And then finally, creation of a program to retrofit or obtain commercial containers used by the city to minimize wildlife conflicts. City council adopted an emergency ordinance, which temporarily addressed this issue. Until the permanent regulations are in place, the emergency ordinance is set to expire May 4, 2018, unless repealed earlier. It is the recommendation of the city manager and the city attorney that the council, by motion, conduct a public hearing to consider public testimony and direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance amending Chapter 10 of the city's code ordinances concerning regulations and penalties to the use, placement, and security of trash containers to minimize conflicts with wildlife in the city and declaring an effective date.
Mr. Lloyd, I have a question. Would you remind the, our viewers that the $4, how long does it take to pay off the container?
It's going to be roughly four and a half year payoff. The, the new trash containers, the automated trash cans that we have are slightly more expensive than the original containers that we used in the bear study, so that went from a four-year payoff to roughly four and a half.
Four and a half, great. Mine was paid off. So thank you for that information, and that way, people, you know, it's going to be yours, you pay it off $4, and you're keeping the bears mostly out of your community and away from your house or wherever you live. Thank you.
And I also wanted to point out that anybody that has a current trash can that has been paid will not be forced to buy a new container.
Of course.
We will be replacing some of those. We do want to move to all automated containers in these zones, so your trash can may be replaced, but you won't be forced to pay for a new container if you've already bought a wildlife container.
Thank you.
Mr. Lloyd, you suggested that in phase 2, it was, when you were reading, you said from 17th to 23rd, but our notes say to 36th.
Yeah, apologies, that was a...
So it is to 23rd?
Yeah, it is to 23rd, so that the first phase, or, I'm sorry, the, the Colorado Division of Wildlife Study.
Oh, right.
Addressed all of those neighborhoods north of 23rd.
Okay.
And we'll be clear when the ordinance, we'll work closely on the actual ordinance to make sure that the areas are clearly delineated about phase 1 and phase 2.
And if individuals not in those streets still want those trash containers, can they get them?
Yes, they can. We, so we order, we have the initial order of 600 cans are coming in in numerous phases, but we have an additional 200 cans on order for people that live outside of these mandatory zones. If they have wildlife conflicts, they can call us and get cans if they want to, and be proactive, or if we have wildlife getting into cans that are outside of these areas, we have them available for the delivery fee.
It's great. I, my German shepherd last night, I live on the creek, and my German shepherd, I believe there was a bear down there, the way he was carrying on. So I would urge every one of you, go order a bear-proof container for your own protection of your property and your animals and your sanity.
Take down your bird feeders, if they are accessible.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Lloyd?
I had a clarification, actually, when I read through this, because I already sort of drafted the ordinance, I've been in the process of drafting it. And in the fourth bullet point, where we say we keep the current penalty structure, my understanding is, and just as a clarification, by current, we mean the penalty structure which is currently found in the emergency ordinance. In other words, we're not going to go back, because there still could be violations, even if we give someone a bear container, if they don't lock it properly, or if they don't store it properly, there could still be offenses. So the current draft that I'm working on, I retained the penalty structure that's in the emergency ordinance, which takes away, if you recall, the, the current ordinance, as it was drafted, has a warning first time, then a $50 fine, then a $100 fine. The emergency ordinance posed, imposes the $100, plus thereafter, it's $200. So I guess for clarification, I wanted guidance from the council as to whether you wanted to keep the old penalty, which is in the, which is in the code now, or the enhanced penalty that we put in the emergency ordinance.
The enhanced penalty.
That's what I thought, so that's...
Especially as it aligns with the providing new can.
Yeah.
That's what I drafted, but I want to make sure.
Thank you.
And I think it's worth, actually, I might ask Mr. Lloyd, because he's the, he is, you know, he's the expert on the, on the mechanisms. One of the key issues here about the new cans, which are going to cost a little bit more, is that they, you don't have to unlock them.
Right.
On the day of pickup, because they will automatically release. So all you got to do is get your trash in there, and it will be secure unless, you know, until the, the truck ends the, the can, which I think is a really important point.
That's correct. The cans that we expect and we purchase were in large part to try and remove some of that human error from the trash cans. The ones with the clips work, they've been proven to be effective, but people do forget to lock them, forget to go out and unlock them on the day of service, and if your can's not unlocked on the day of service, we do charge a fee to return, so this eliminates that, that potential for human error, so.
That's, that's, I think that's a really important change that you all have made. Okay. At this point, is there another question for Mr. Lloyd? Or Mr. Nelson? Okay, at this point, I will open the public testimony portion of the hearing and invite individuals to come forward. We asked that you would provide your name and address for the record, your limit your remarks to five minutes per person, unless they're a designated person for, more than two people can have 10 minutes, and council need not comment on, directly on public testimony. So has anyone wished to speak to this issue? Seeing none, I close the public testimony section of the hearing and ask for any questions or comments from the council.
No questions?
Mayor, do you have anything to say?
No, I was just going to make a motion. Other than, you know, if we're done, then I've, I've...
Move for a motion.
Actually, I've been looking at my cheat sheet, the next step should be closing the public hearing, which I now do, and invite a motion.
Mayor, I will move to direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance amending Chapter 10, the city's code of ordinances concerning regulations and penalties to the use, placement, and security of trash containers and wildlife-resistant containers to minimize conflicts with wildlife in the city and declaring an effective date.
Second.
And we have a roll call.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor President Marbury?
Yes.
Counselor Bettine?
Yes.
Counselor Bricky?
Yes.
And Mayor White?
Yes. Moving on, the next item on the agenda is introduction of ordinances, and we have one ordinance coming in tonight, and that is, if I can get the title to come up, an ordinance amending portions of Article 3 of Chapter 24 of the Code and ordinances of the city of Durango regarding park administration and regulations and declaring an effective date. We had a public hearing on this item a couple of weeks ago.
Yes, this will be ordinance 2018-5.
Are you looking for a motion?
I am.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 2018-5.
A second. And we have a roll call.
Counselor Bettine?
Yes.
Mayor President Marbury?
Yes.
Counselor Bricky?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef? Mayor White?
Yes. Counsel, for anyone listening to video, or listening to audio, Counsel Youssef stepped out of the room over charlie. And finally, we have administrative issue, discussion, and possible action concerning councils, the city council official position on the homeless camp.
Thank you, Mayor White. This morning, we had a joint meeting with the Board of County Commissioners and the sheriff, so what I would like to do is review the agenda doc and summarize where we were prior to that meeting, and then Kevin Hall will come to the podium and talk about more specifics that were discussed this morning. But I, I think it is the intent of the council to go on record with a position regarding homelessness, and we have spent many, many hours in discussions among ourselves as a city council and also with the Board of County Commissioners. And if I misrepresent something, please interrupt me, but as of last Friday, when this document was prepared, there were three immediate concerns that the council identified. First and foremost was the...
First and foremost was the fire danger of the existing camp. And then there are additional public safety concerns that include public health and sanitation, and then the impacts on neighborhoods. And there are also numerous other reasons, but those seem to be the three most critical. And one of the things that was discussed this morning is we may consider an emergency ordinance to implement a, what was the term? Mayor Protem, Lightner Creek
Shelter.
So that's one of the options that you may consider. So the proposed motion, and I go through and identify some of the council goals that you're trying to address. The proposed motion in this agenda doc focused on the La Plata County Sheriff, but this morning, I think we agreed to expand that to include the sheriff and the Board of County Commissioners. So if this motion is acceptable, you should read in and add the Board of County Commissioners, because they both were part of that discussion this morning. And perhaps, Kevin, if you wouldn't mind coming to the podium. Taking a position in public is important, because you haven't made a decision to date. You've had some deliberations, you've had some consensus, you've directed staff to prepare a variety of analyses. But tonight, we hope the council can agree on a position. And that would be communicated via a letter to the Board of County Commissioners and the sheriff. So what I would like Kevin to do is summarize what we discussed this morning, so we can agree on what the contents of that letter would include.
Well, the conversation this morning really reflected the study session from last Tuesday, in which we ran through a number of decision point items that obviously in the study session you can't make a decision on, but we had a good conversation about that. I'd say this morning's discussion with the BOCC is similar, in that a lot of good dialogue came up of that meeting with some intended outcomes that we wanted to memorialize tonight, as Ron stated. As you recall, we looked at quite a variety of sites that would allow for some type of sheltering area. Previous discussion was about more of a formal camp area. Not really any excellent sites out there, but as Ron pointed out, the existing camping situation in the open space that is owned by the county, surrounded by overland mountain park and other city-owned lands, is problematic for a variety of reasons. We've been discussing those for weeks, if not several months. The sheriff has indicated a willingness to close the camp and not allow more camping to occur if we provide an alternative site. So in the analysis that we put together over the last handful of months and whittled things down, the consensus of council was to look at the Lightner Creek site, which is a little bit west of the designated off-leash area, although still on that same property, surrounded by Smelter Mall and Lightner Creek and its river. But it's a little bit west of there. So there's much work to be done if, in fact, council chooses to specifically direct staff to work on that site. But essentially, what we're talking about is some very minimal improvements that would allow for sanitation, some degree of containment, so that dogs aren't coming into the area where people are resting. We will work on that in the coming weeks. I think any of the sites that we talked to had their own unique challenges associated with them. I believe we have a similar situation with any site, which is a fair amount of concern by anyone in the vicinity of the site selected. We've already received at least one, if not few, few additional verbal comments regarding integrating a sheltering area with the off-leash area. Those are issues we will have to work through, like we would with any other site. So there's a variety of things we'll have to do here, but what we would like to do is have that site identified, and then we'll get to work on some of the specifics. There's obviously gonna be costs associated with any type of improvements that go in there, which is gonna be somewhat limited, but there's still costs. There's been discussion in the past of trying to share those costs with the county. As city manager LeBlanc pointed out, the sheriff isn't particularly interested in being the manager of that site, so we're gonna need to find someone who would manage it. Certainly, we would work with whomever takes on that role to establish certain rules that are essentially emulating what is being done on the camp up the hill, to create some expectations as to how the site could be used. There is also the issue of secure storage that was brought up this morning and at last week's study session, and I think there's general agreement that in order for any site to work, it needs to be a place for folks to put their things. While we haven't worked through the nuts and bolts on that, I think we have a number of alternatives that could potentially work, that would allow for folks to store their belongings throughout the day, so they can go about whatever business they might have. The, another component that came up today's meeting related to the strategic plan, and the county seemed willing to take on the task of issuing an RFP that was in agreement, working with the city staff. But I think the more immediate issue is not so much the RFP and the strategic plan, although that will come forward. Tonight's action was really related to identifying the site, identifying the fact that we need some storage, we're gonna need to find somebody to manage the site beyond the capacities that the city has to do so, and articulate that in writing. The county attorney indicated that they would need to have some type of commitment on an alternative site, not just a verbal that we're gonna move ahead before they would start moving through what they refer to as the protocol they have in place in order to reduce the number of campers and not allow other people to camp there. And that is really, the concept is for us to put the plan in writing. I think the emergency ordinance, which we've talked about being a potential, if we do that on the third of April, that puts some certainty to moving this forward, that would hopefully put the sheriff in a position where he agreed to start implementing the protocols that the county attorney did not specify, but kind of called out, that are in place to do that. So all of these things combined, in terms of the short term on this entire issue, is really the idea of providing an alternative resting place that provides enough amenity to have the sheriff close the existing site, which has really significantly been reiterated by the residents, both Elavita as well as Crestview neighborhood, because of concerns that were already expressed tonight. I will say, you know, every time we pick the site and talk about a site, as I said earlier, there's been comments brought forward about why it isn't the right site. I suspect we'll be receiving more of that. We certainly, after the meeting this morning, I did hear also concerns about the Lightner Creek site is maybe not being one that folks would be receptive to. But I believe that in terms of the alternatives we have available to us, it's the best of the least acceptable, I guess. And while that sounds like a pretty low bar, I think everyone here recognizes, and hopefully the community recognizes, the difficulty this situation poses and the need to identify something. And, you know, I think what we talked about this morning also was, if something doesn't work real well right out the gates, we have to adjust. And I think this is gonna be a continual fine tune, as we know, this is an issue that's not just one for Durango, but most communities around the state, as well as around the nation, are struggling with this. So we have to find something that works uniquely for Durango, and this was the first step which the counselors tended to agree on. Certainly had a little bit of disagreement with the county commissioners on how this should look, but ultimately, if it's the city's responsibility in providing the site, and also finding someone to oversee the site, it's the counselors who are gonna have to decide how that looks, working with staff. And it's gonna be the, you know, coming on staff to fine tune the details and bringing them back as necessary for decision points. But in the meantime, where we're at is trying to articulate this in writing so the county commissioners and sheriff understand our position on the matter. And it allows us to kind of start documenting how we're gonna move forward with this. You know, the details on what the site improvements will look like, it's gonna take a little bit of time to work through, but certainly those will be brought back to council here as soon as possible. Requires some contact with other agencies, it's gonna take some other efforts to see what it looks like down on the site, how it works, how it integrates with the off-leash area. Certainly, we have the parking lot issue to deal with. So there's a range of things. And again, I think we're gonna also be dealing with neighbor comments on this one as well. But it's, we will take a step forward on this, and if we have to do some adjustments as we move forward, we will do so. But I think that summarizes the primary points from this morning, and are salient to the idea of an alternative site that is a sheltering location, and where we're at with the Lightner Creek site.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Any questions from counsel, for Mr. Hall?
I have a question, if you don't mind. Just on the process a little bit, Mr. Hall, how, once we sign the letter, supposing that we do, is there a public process that will then be initiated in terms of the planning process relevant to that particular parcel? Or so there would be public testimony and all that good stuff?
That's really a decision from the city council. Quite frankly, the emergency ordinance is essentially going to, because of the life safety issues involved here, will, I guess I'll look to city attorney a little bit, essentially suspend the typical rules that we have in place because of the life safety concerns. So it wouldn't be as typical standard land use process, although certainly notification surrounding property owners is certainly something that could be done relatively easily. I suspect we will be hearing from the folks just by virtue of that. Whether the council chooses to do something above and beyond that, I think there has been conversations on that. My takeaway would have been maybe that there wasn't public hearings necessarily involved, but certainly an interest in hearing from the public, what shape that would take, I guess I'll defer to other than that.
I would just like to remind the council and the community that the fuels are at missionary bridge fire status. So for those of us that were here during missionary bridge fire, we know exactly what that means to our community. And the threat of fire has been the main concern for this city council, not for our Westside residents, as well as for the people that are camping up there. So we have come to the conclusion through hours and hours and hours of discussion among ourselves and with the county commissioners, that the shelter is the best application of management that we can do at this time, for the reasons that we stated. And I can't stress enough the amount of fire. The sheriff has already told us that there have been fires up there, that he has given the residents fire extinguishers. So, I mean, that's all good and fine, but in terms of a blazing Westside fire, that has been the driving force behind the city council making decisions and going forward for the safety of our Westside people, as well as the people that are camping in the woods.
Mr. Mayor, could I add to what Kevin said in addressing Counselor Bettine? I think it was the sentiment of the council that if we run into a roadblock on the Lightner Creek site, we'll just go to the next site
Right.
and try to keep that, expedite that, so that we're telling the county that we will have a site.
I will add to the question about an emergency ordinance. Typically, emergency ordinance doesn't have the same process as a typical ordinance, so there's no requirement for a hearing. It's effective when adopted for a sixty-day period. So if you wanna have some public process built into that, it'd be nice to know, so that we could do that.
I'm not suggesting that a public process be initiated, I just wanted to make sure I understand what is the next step. I think based on the fire danger that Mayor Protem just illuminated, as well as the expediency necessary to get this done within any relevant time for the spring and to alleviate those dangers, I'm in favor of the emergency ordinance. I just wanna make sure I understood.
The plan, assuming that we get guidance from council tonight, the immediate plan would be to bring back an ordinance on the third.
I'm in favor of emergency ordinance. I agree with Counselor Bettine.
I think it's important to know, for the public to know, as well as to remind ourselves that this statement of position is not made in a vacuum of other actions on this same topic. And we also discussed this morning the RFP, request for proposal for a strategic master plan, or strategic plan to continue to focus on this, on long-term management of this health and safety problem. And so we're not just closing down the camp and calling it done. This is a long-term, multifaceted problem that we're, approach that we're taking, and this is just the very first step. The city of Durango endorses that, will fund, help fund that strategic plan. We're gonna continue to advocate for the permanent supportive housing project that's, will be built on city land. We'll continue to advocate for affordable housing projects using low-income housing tax credits, similar to the Lumion project that'll be built next year with permanent supportive housing included in it, and other projects such as the VOA senior housing out of Three Springs. So we're not just closing down the camp, we're looking for more humane, long-term strategies that we can manage this problem in our community and come out with the best health and safety response. So that's, this is, I'm feeling pretty comfortable with the amount of time and amount of decision-making that we've put into this as a council.
And don't forget the homeless coordinator.
Of the homeless coordinator?
Yes.
Yes, jointly funded homeless coordinator. And with the sheriff's discussion about that he's not interested in being the gatekeeper, if you will, of this new shelter, that may take on a different role. The homeless coordinator that we thought would keep focus on this issue might be, in fact, have a different role of gatekeeper or something like that in the short term. But yeah, we've funded a number of this plan, the homeless coordinator, in effort to make this as easy a transition as possible.
And I'd like to remind the community one more thing, that the problem of homelessness is nationwide. It's in Grand Junction, Colorado Springs, Fort Collins, Denver, Houston, Texas. So we are a small community with limited resources and not deep pockets, but we are trying to make good decisions for our community. And the danger of fire, it should be on everyone's radar.
One other question for you, Kevin. In terms of the letter and content itself, would it be appropriate to have in that letter information relevant to expectations of the county's financial participation in this project? And also, secondary to that, I know you got a no answer from the sheriff this morning at the meeting in terms of his willingness to help manage the camp, but I think we were pretty unanimous in our desire to have the sheriff's department consider that as part of their obligation, as part of this process, as we're all coming together as a community to try and solve, or help to alleviate some of the issues relevant to this. Would it be appropriate to still include that request in the letter itself?
There's probably no downside to re-articulating our position and desire to have the sheriff participate, although I think he was pretty clear in his position this morning. As for cost sharing, I believe we've talked about that on a number of occasions. You know, the sheriff has already got some costs involved with what he's doing right now. It would seem reasonable that they would participate in the cost of what happens on the new site. And sharing that within the letter seems perfectly reasonable.
Could, would it be acceptable to you and the council if we would ask the sheriff to reconsider his position?
I think publicly asking him to reconsider his position would be a good idea. I mean, he's on the spot in that meeting this morning, may not be prepared to fully think through that answer. I mean, give him another opportunity to really think through the idea that, you know, the city's coming to the table here in a situation that I think he's had to manage already, and something that's been challenging for his organization to manage and costly, and, you know, really had an entire person in his organization dedicated to it almost over the last several years. I would think he would be interested in participating in the process as much as he possibly can. I would think he would be interested in participating in the process as much as he possibly can within the limitations of his department. I understand he has them, but I would personally like to ask again if he would participate on that level. I think, I think the county needs a step up. City certainly is. We're providing the land and all of the processes that we've been through here, and it's not ideal. None of this is, is ideal, and I think it's difficult to get to this point. So I would hope that all of us would participate, both financially and with as much manpower as we have available to us. I wonder what you guys think about it.
I think it's fine to put it in the letter, what he was suggesting this morning. And since you weren't there, I would just, just to, his, I would imagine that he would participate and support like you were suggesting, and I would love to see him continue to do that, because I think that they've been very effective. His suggestion was that by changing it to a shelter, that he does not have the manpower to go up there and take down tents and/or make sure everybody's out every day at 9:00 because right now it's self-governing. And if I can, I'd like to just share a few of my thoughts, because I just want to say a few things. First of all, I really commend this council for working extremely hard on this issue. I, it's been the most difficult issue, certainly on my short tenure on this board, but it has been difficult, and this group has worked really well together to try to sort through very complex decision. And I appreciate where we've come, and I do support where we are and where we're going. But I just want to share some concerns, and I recognize, I believe I'm in the minority in this, but I do want to share these concerns, because I think that they have implications not only on the homeless population, but on the rest of our community. I'm happy with our location. I think that we have cited a good location considering the negatives of all the others. So I think we made good progress there. The conversation evolved a lot as we were making these, spending hours making these decisions, and when we started talking about a shelter, we were originally talking about a bricks and mortar shelter. And that I was very supportive of, shelter meaning only a night facility. But when we start talking about a camp or a shelter on land, I just need to voice my concern, my deep concern for where we're going with this policy. And first of all, I think it, all the research and literature that I've read suggests that displacing residents daily is extremely disruptive, as you could always imagine, and it thrusts this population back into a volatile cycle of instability. In addition, by the very nature of displacing them every day, you create a significant portion of this population that becomes service resistant. They're only going to hide deeper in the woods, farther in the woods. It's not safe for them, and it's not safe for our community. It makes it more difficult to enforce, and we don't really change the situation that we're in right now. Number three, I've seen some really good people in this community work very hard since 2014, working to build the trust and support of this group of people, and it's working right now. They, they, they trust us, they're cooperating with us, and the situation right there is working. I fear that if we implement policies that are disruptive and chaotic to their lives, we're going to lose that trust and we're never going to get it back. And that's a real concern for me. In addition, I think that there's ramifications to this community that I'm fearful that we're being shortsighted, but I do appreciate what Council Burke was saying in that this is the first step, and that I've also heard Mr. Hall say, we will adapt as we go, we will manage, adaptably manage, and I appreciate that. But I just need to share these concerns. We can't criminalize the homelessness, so if we kick them out every day at 9:00, of course, they're going to go down to our parks and into our city, and they're going to be very visible. They're going to have all their belongings on their backs, so they're going to pull out their blankets, and there they will be. I fear that not only they're going to be more visible to our community, but they're going to, it's going to be, our own residents are going to feel, or other population are going to feel afraid to walk on our river trail and access our parks, and I'm concerned about that. My thought is that in the current camping situation they're in now, just bear with me, because I just need to voice this, because as our city manager said, it's, this is the time to voice your opinion, and you know, you guys need to know where I stand. I do believe, I recognize I stand in the minority, but I need to voice my concerns. Where they are currently, they can be in a safe place, where they can establish familial relationships and friendships that can look after each other and look after each other's belongings, which creates a more stable state of existence. And what I fear is that we're enacting policies that, that are short-term to address the public risk, but what I wish and what I hope that we get to ultimately, in the long-term, my goal would be to get to policies that work to stabilize this population and mobilize them up and out of homelessness in a comprehensive manner that looks at all stages of homelessness. But the worst part, and my biggest concern about what we're doing in the short term, because that's my long-term goal, is that we are enacting policies that are going to have a negative effect on our char, the character of our town and our quality of life. And I just need to communicate that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign.
I would prefer to speak before I entertain a motion.
A couple other comments, too, if you don't mind. Mayor, if you want to go first.
No, go ahead, Chris.
Well, I just wanted to acknowledge Melissa's comments, and, you know, I think, Melissa, you stated a couple times that you're in the minority. I would suspect maybe not. And I think the rest of us probably agree with and understand much of what you just expressed. Under the, under the situation that we're in, I think what we've all agreed to try and do here is take a step, as you stated. And I think that step is a moving target. There's no question that we will learn some things as we go here. I think as an emergency ordinance, I think in the community at large, the maximum, I think, that we've learned that the community has tolerance for is that step at this time.
I agree with that.
And I think, you know, we're trying to create a situation where we're protecting the health, safety, welfare of all the populations in an emergency situation. And if we had resources available to us to do something else now immediately, instead of, as we're working on, other low-barrier shelter options that are more bricks and mortar, relevant and long-term supportive housing, that's bricks and mortar, that's more long-term for the community's health, those things are in play, and I think we're all supportive of those, too. They just don't happen very quickly.
Correct.
And this, we kind of have to have it happen quickly, and it's, it's really mimicking a low-barrier shelter environment at its most basic form, unfortunately. And I think, I just wanted to acknowledge your comments. I think they're certainly relevant. I agree with most everything that you said. And I think that the issue will probably move a little bit as we go down the path, and we'll see what the community has tolerance for in terms of trying to really serve the community. And I'd also just like to add back in there, because we mentioned it earlier, that part of the process here is to create a long-term strategic plan, fund that plan, hire somebody through the Health and Human Services Department here that is a specialist in dealing with this community and helping them find all of the services in our community that exist now or may exist in the future, to help them into a much more sustainable future. And so, you know, those things just don't happen quickly. All of those things that I just said are in motion, and everything else that we've described is in motion right now. So I feel very confident that we're making the best decision that's available to us at the time with the resources we have today. And with the mind on the fact that you're right, I think, I think there's some tricky parts of this that we have to be very cautious of. And one of the suggestions that I want to reiterate, and I'll reiterate it again as we actually get to the part where we are doing the work, is that the homeless community has a council. I really think it's critical that as this evolves, that those folks are engaged in the process, that they're the ones who help come up with any rules associated with the facility, that they help guide how the facility works, that, that we gain as much buy-in as possible with that community, so that we can have optimal success at whatever percentage of success we're able to have with this. So I think everything you said is right. I think there's some outcomes here that are not going to be particularly tasteful for the community at large. I think it does disperse people in the community. I think we all recognize that, but it also, it also makes it forefront in our community. We all, instead of people being in an unsafe environment in the forest, where there's violence sometimes, and places we can't respond to with law enforcement, we'll all be challenged to confront this issue for the humanitarian issue that it is. And, you know, I think we're all on the same page on that. I really do.
I wanted to share with you that staff requested the rules from their existing camps, and our staff has not seen them, and so.
We have a copy now.
Then they, right. And so that's, I think, will be integrated into the plan for the shelter.
I would really second Council Bateen's suggestion about engaging the existing homelessness council, because the buy-in is, as much as we can get is critical. What can we do in the camp to create a level of security that would cause people to say, you know, it's a real hassle to tear down every night, but at least there's a place to store my stuff? And try to find a, an accommodation there, and it may well be, you know, piece of the adaptive management that Mr. Hall just mentioned. This is a really, surely, you know, not just one for a year, it's certainly the hardest we've seen in seven years. And it is an extremely difficult problem. It's a national problem manifesting here. I think there's, you know, there's a few rays of hope on the, on the horizon. According to, you know, Don Burns' estimates that he provided in the homelessness forum in February, the estimate, if you scale, just simply scale down the need for dwelling units from the national numbers, which are in many millions, to La Plata County, the number comes out to be a few hundred. And we've got several hundred housing units coming online in 2017. They are not, most of them would not be accessible to this population through our homelessness because, but the possibility exists of some shuffling of housing, and some of the, just to pick up, just pick something out of the air, we know that some of the old motels are serving as low-income housing. What if some of those, we started, you know, a number of those became vacant as a result of this housing change? That's not going to help us in April, but, but it does offer a glimmer of hope that the scale of the problem in Durango is such that with successive steps, we can take bites, I've been talking about taking, you know, eating an elephant. The only way you do that is one bite at a time. And the, this is a step. It may not be optimal. Council Westendorf, or Commissioner Westendorf this morning articulated very clearly the worry in the back of my mind, which echoes what Councilor Youssef just said. What if there's no buy-in and people just scatter? In this, which case, we might be worse off. But my response this morning, and it is still, which risk do we want to take? And I think it has been the unanimous ascent of this council that the risk of fire starting in a camp is paramount concern for us, for the health of the city. And this is a step that we can take to ameliorate that. I think, you know, it's an adaptation to say, all right, what would, what would allow some better buy-in to get more people to say this, you know, there's some safety here, there's some storage, there's potential for enough stability to go looking for a job. Those are the kinds of things that I think can help us go forward. And it's, you know, it's, we don't know whether what we are hoping happens here will in fact occur, but the Councilor Marbury has reiterated the extreme fire risk and what happened the last time our forest was this dry. And missionary ridge is downwind from the city of Durango. The camp is not. And so we have some real risks to the full population of the city, and we need to keep working on this going forward, take a step to see if we can make things better. I drafted my next weekend's column for The Herald, and in it, one of the things I said, and I think I will leave in, in light of today's remarks, what if every faith community in the city and service club took it upon themselves to help one or two individuals? That could be dozens. That's as many people who are camping right now. If, you know, government can't completely address this issue, there's no solution, it's management. And I think that we're taking a step to try to manage the issue better. We're going to need help from the whole community, as well as from our colleagues at La Plata County.
Well, thanks for the discussion. That was extremely important. And I, you know, although I share some of the concerns that Melissa talked about, you know, I think they are issues that we've been talking about forever, forever, being the last year and a half, and really focused this past three months. And Chris, she said it really well, too, in terms of how we make this really difficult transition from the camp to a transitional housing, or transitional shelter. So, and in my mind, this is not a vendetta against the camp. This is what we were told is a requirement of us in order to obtain enforcement, not only at the camp, and the hazard is not only at the camp, and it's more critically in all those other camps throughout the county and impacting the city as well. So this is the first step, as you said, little bites, you know, this is the first step to obtain an enforcement of laws that are on the books. So this is not meant to take, kick anybody out of the camp. This is just what we were told is required to, for our sheriff to begin enforcement of the camping ban, or camping laws that are currently on the books. So I don't want, and hopefully, those campers understand that that's the issue. It's not a vendetta against the camp. It's a process that we have to take to assure that all the campers throughout the county are, are dealt with in a fair-handed manner by the sheriff, and so, as well as the city of Durango. So this is, this is the very first, very first step, and it's an unfortunate step, but I think it's, it might have repercussions that also require the kind of participation that the mayor just described. I mean, that's what I've been hoping for. I've called it a call for action amongst our faith-based community. But if we allow the status quo to continue like it, we left a meeting two weeks ago going, well, what happened here? Nothing is going to happen if we don't take some action of this nature, of this, of this emergency nature. So I'm happy with where we're at right now. And none of us wanted to make this, and you're certainly not in, alone in this, in that same feeling. I know that this is an extremely difficult discussion, but, but I'm glad we had this little wrap-up here. But, but I do think we, you know, when it's time to make a motion, I'd be happy to.
Go ahead.
Begin that motion, which is to authorize the mayor to sign a letter to the La Plata County Sheriff, Sean Smith, and the Board of County Commissioners, expressing the will of the city council and requesting his support to close the existing homeless camp on county-owned property west of the city of Durango, and then enforce the county's ordinances that restrict camping on public land.
I'll second. Hey, we have a roll call.
Councilor Bateen?
Yes.
Councilor Burke?
Yes.
Councilor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Mayor Wy.
It's another stage in a, in a long process as we seek to address this issue. I acknowledge the folks in the audience who have stuck around for this conversation. The conversation is not over. This is one more step, but I think it articulates the city's commitment to act on this in the interests of public safety and hope that we will be able to follow this step with others that greatly improve the situation over, over a period of time. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting.